It appears we have everybody here. I'll call this meeting to order. First order of business, roll call.
Alderman Bass.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Knox.
Here.
Alderman Stratton.
Here.
And Alderman Totten.
Here.
There's a quorum.
Uh, next order of business, approval of agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Okay, next order, proclamation, seeing none. Move on to consent agenda.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Stratton. Any discussion? I had one question. On page six, there was an item, uh, um, well, actually two items that totaled a hundred and one thousand dollars to, um, Dowd, uh, Linger and Sons. Is that the construction of the bridge over the, um, trails over the creek? Anybody?
Yeah. Yeah, Mayor, you are correct.
Okay, that I'm just curious about that. Pretty big cost. Want to make sure I knew what it was.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Carries six zero. Um, next item, previous business, seeing none. Move on to new business, seeing none. Next item, presentation, um, Purple Peace Foundation, Stacy Perry.
Stacy, are you on the line there?
It doesn't look like there's anything with her hand raised. She did confirm last week she would appear. She has the Zoom link.
So, and maybe she'll get on here in just a second, but for those of you that have been around for a few years, minus last year, Stacy with the Purple Peace Foundation has put on a fundraising car show and they've utilized the pavilion, um, for that. And one of the things they do is a fund right fundraising, um, perspective is sell t-shirts, merchandise, kind of thing. So she typically comes before the board, um, and basically asks for the board's position or permission to, um, not strictly enforce those sections of the code that, um, would normally be in violation of which would be the selling of goods and services on city property.
You happen to get in here yet, Stacy?
It's weird. There's a phone number that's showing up as talking, but nothing's coming through.
I noticed that too. That four zero four down at the bottom.
That would be me.
You would be.
I'm on two fifteen Front Street, Jerry Simmons. I was told that then tonight at seven o'clock was the Zoom meeting for the Alderman. So I'm just waiting for my turn.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the four oh four number, so.
Thank you. Um, do you want to proceed and see if she joins in and come back to it, or?
Yeah, I mean, the, the request is pretty much the same as it's been in past years. Um, like I said, what she going for is getting permission from the board to be able to, to sell those items, um, as the fundraising mechanism during the car show. So if the board saw fit, um, if someone made a motion, um, to basically direct staff to not strictly enforce, uh, those sections of the code that, uh, those actions will be in violation of, I think that would be sufficient. And Sarah, you could, uh, chime in if I misrepresented that, but.
No, that's correct. We would be asking the board authorize administrative discretion, um, for this event.
Everybody's pretty familiar with it. Would some like to make that motion?
So moved there. I'd like to make the motion to, uh, allow the board administrative, um, what was that administrative discretion? On the, the issue of the Purple Peace Foundation fundraiser.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Knox. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Seeing none, motion carries six zero. Item of business, um, public hearing on, uh, MS four permit application.
Mayor and Board, I'm going to turn it over to our city engineer, Dick Tuttle. Uh, you have the presentation.
Mayor, Board, uh, this, uh, public hearing is for the, uh, new, uh, permit discharge, MS four discharge permit. The city's current permit was issued on October first, two thousand sixteen. Permits run for five years, therefore this one expires on September thirtieth of this year. Uh, the permit was public noticed on February sixteenth, and the new permit is, is more comprehensive than previous versions. And DNR requires application for renewal of the permit at least a hundred and eighty days prior to expiration. And I'll answer any questions anybody has.
I'll start it out. I'm not familiar at all with what the MS, um, or permit even involves.
It's a permit from DNR for our storm water system to discharge into the waters of the state. And so we have to, uh, maintain our waters as clean as we can. We have to have certain programs in place to make sure that development does not, uh, discharge erosion into the waters. And then we, uh, have to have a program for checking the various, uh, outlets into the streams to make sure there's no pollution in those.
Any questions? Are we ready for motion hearing on this, or just, uh?
Oh, there will be a follow-up, um, item later in the meeting. So being that it's a public hearing, Mayor, you, um.
Oh, yes, open it up to, open it up to public. Um, any, any hands raised on this?
And we know we need to wait probably fifteen seconds or so before we actually close it.
Still nothing with that. We will move on to next item. Next item of business is resolutions. First resolution, R twenty-one dash twenty-two. Execute permit renewal application from Missouri Department of Natural Resources Municipal, um, separate storm sewer permit.
I move that we approve resolution number R twenty-one dash twenty-two.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Um, next item, resolution R twenty-one dash twenty-three. Um, a resolution for the city administrator to sign a renewal agreement with, um, Ray County Sheriff's Office, um, to provide detention services.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty-one, twenty-three.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Headley. Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
So are we utilizing both Blue Springs and Ray County then for detention services? Chief, you're on mute there.
We've been using this Blue Springs for about, since about two thousand and sixteen. That's primarily for our twenty-four hour holds and recently they just tell us they'll start taking in some of our, uh, fresh charges. Ray County, we normally use them for, um, uh, people arrested on warrants, uh, when they're arraigned by the judge, they have longer stays at Ray County. But oftentimes Blue Springs, they only have, uh, sixteen cells, so they get filled up pretty quick.
Got you. Thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Next item, resolution R twenty, twenty-one days, twenty-four. Resolution authorized and city administrator to sign an agreement with the Jackson County, Missouri, um, distribution of combat funds. You have seventy-five thousand dollars for the twenty-one fiscal year.
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number R two-one dash two-four.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this is something that we go through every year, but, uh, basically this resolution is just accepting the money, um, from combat, um, and it supports things like some of our, uh, the, the dare programs and, um, some of the salaries, uh, and incidental expense expenses associated with that.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Next item of business, resolution R twenty-one dash twenty-five. Resolution authorized and city administrator to enter an agreement with Utility Services Company Incorporated to provide maintenance for the city-owned water towers.
May I move that we approve resolution number R twenty-one dash twenty-five?
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second, Alderman Knox. Um, all in favor, or I'm sorry, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this is the same company that we've utilized, uh, for like over ten years at this point, um, but they're the ones that are in charge of coming in and basically maintaining our, um, our storage facilities for water. So this is what allows us to, uh, has allowed us to get our passing grades, um, as a safe, uh, operating system. Um, so for each year, it varies on what they do. Um, they have a schedule that, you know, every so many years they'll repaint the towers. Um, some of the years it's cleaning inside. So a number of different tasks, but this is the, the same group that we've used for a number of years now and have been happy with.
I've seen they have a pretty impressive loose list of clients, um, but do we ever check and see if, um, for competitive prices on it, or?
Yeah, so this one we really haven't, and part of that reason is it's not really a year-to-year program. You're basically signing up for that. Um, I think it, Mark, is it five years to cycle through everything for each one?
Yes, that's correct.
And so that it's kind of a, it's not a complete, um, sole, um, sole business thing, but it, it, in some ways it, it almost is. There's not a whole lot of groups that really do it. Um, and if we go out for bid, we kind of be starting over in that program. What we would typically find is that they'd want to completely start over since they're putting their name on it and do everything in that first year.
No further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Couple ayes there. Um, all in favor, or all opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Next item, um, resolution R twenty-one days, twenty-six. Um, a resolution, um, Board of Aldermen, um, designating identified city property as permissible location for the two thousand twenty-one food truck, um, event.
Well, I move we accept resolution twenty-one dash twenty-six.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second, Alderman Knox. Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, if you remember at our last meeting, we had a, uh, presentation on this. And the board, uh, recommended for staff to come up with a resolution accepting this. There is one thing that we would like to add to the resolution, which would just be added into section one, and that was what we had talked about, which is the requirement, um, of the organizer, uh, to list the city as an additional insured. It was inferred, but, um, it should be added in there as a, as a bullet.
Okay, I have a, a couple of things on this. Um, I've been discussing this, um, with, um, Dennis Stroud. I was talking to him on some other things, and he has offered up the, um, racetrack as a, a potential facility for this outing. Um, I've also, um, spoke with, uh, Brad Burdette, the insurer for the, um, partnership. Um, Brad Burdette tells me that the insurance that the city's going to require is going to cost eight thousand twenty-six dollars a year. Um, I know that that hasn't been presented to the partnership yet in that amount. Um, and I also believe that if, um, they do go down to, if they do decide to accept, um, um, the racetrack's, um, offer, that eight thousand dollars wouldn't be required. Um, I would like to see this matter tabled and, um, and let them see if they can work out a deal with, with the racetrack and, um, and go from there. And if it needs to be brought back up, bring it back up at the next meeting.
Is there, is there anybody on from the fair board or the partnership?
This is Tasha Lindsay, Green Valley Partnership. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I, I am here. I do not believe, Mayor, that you have the proper cost of that insurance. Um, it's only forty-some-odd dollars a week, getting that cost at one thousand twenty-six dollars for the year.
But regardless, even, um, we have an option to you, to use, um, or that, to, that you have an option to use a private facility. Um, there's several drawbacks to using a city facility, including even if it's just a thousand dollar cost. Um, I would, I'd still like to hear a motion. Um, that's, that's my position on it right now. I mean, I can bring up my problems I feel we have with, with, with it being run at a city facility, but, um, any, any discussion on either point?
Tasha, this is Alderman Knox. I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Do you find the racetrack, do you find that would be suitable for you with its location?
I honestly, I mean, personally, it's really hard to get to. It's really far off the beaten path. Um, if we have any amount of rain at all, it's going to be really hard to stage those trucks. Um, there's very limited park, you know what I mean? Like, like the parking area, um, it's.
I feel like we would lose, I, I feel like we would lose, um, all the seating at the park. Um, the walkability to Iron Kettle, that's kind of expecting to have traffic from this, um, and the Mexican restaurant if we were to move it that far south.
I don't, I mean, I, I don't, and this is no offense to Dennis, because I think he's an amazing person and I know the track is so much fun, right? So you hate saying anything negative at all about any other location, and that's not how I'm, I'm meaning this at all against Dennis. Um, I appreciate his offer. I mean, I love it, and if he ever wants a couple of trucks out there, I mean, by all means, you know, we can arrange that for him. I think for this type of event, I, I do feel like we're going to lose a lot, and he's got ra, you know, he has races go on on, on Friday nights. I think that's going to be pretty combative. Um, you know, with, I, I just, I just don't think there's going to be enough parking. I agree with the tables. Um, you know, at this point, it's a, it's a, there is a process, and, and I, and I, and I respect the process that, that the mayor and the aldermen have, and if, if the alderman and the mayor wish that we find a private property to do this on, you know, then Mike and, then, then Mike and I will, will meet and will do that. I don't believe that I would choose the racetrack as the initial location that I would want to move this event out to. I really don't.
Something where I threw up at the start of the discussion, um, on those posts that got thrown around this weekend, um, there, I see several properties withholding on city property. One, we're, we're, we're kind of going against something we voted on two months ago where we said that no one could sell on, um, on parks, and now we're turning around and we're opening, um, the, the city, um, parking lot up to, um, um, a commercial venture. Um, in doing that, we're going to have a, a very difficult time of telling someone in the future that wants to come in there and do a, um, flea market, uh, um, craft sales or anything else, telling them, no, we're, we're opening ourselves up to suits as soon as we allow one group like this to do those things, and then we don't allow others.
But, but we already, Mayor, we already do that to a degree with the Purple Peace thing that we just did. Everything that's going on with the fair, and there are several craft fairs in the community center already.
They, they rent space in the, in the community center. Um, the two other items are once-a-year things. Um, this is something that's taken up, uh, twenty, twenty-four events, I believe. The Fridays is going to cause congestion at the, the park, the, um, community center is going to disrupt traffic for the police department. Um, there are just a lot of faults withholding this on city property. And, uh, I, I dispute Tasha's figure. I, when I spoke to Brad, he was pretty firm on the eight thousand twenty-six dollars. I don't know what's changed since then.
He, he, he talked to me the day after our meeting, and he said that he came up with it, and it was one thousand twenty-six. I'm unless I, I could have very easily misunderstood him. So unless you have that in black and white, or did you talk to him on the telephone? Because I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking it was a communication error. I, I don't believe that an event like this is going to cost eight thousand dollars. My liquor, my liquor liability for the fair, and that's going to be higher, right? Because we are serving liquor. It's six hundred dollars, and that's a, that's a weekend, but it is also liquor liability. Um,
this is.
I, I just don't believe, and I, I will definitely confirm with Brad tomorrow. I'm not going to bother him tonight, obviously, but I will definitely give Brad a call tomorrow. Um,
this is.
And make sure that one of us.
For events, um, and, uh, it comes out to, I believe it was four hundred and thirty-some dollars per event, which, um, is not a lot of money for insurance companies to charge for something like that. Um, so it, it's not that far offline from your six hundred dollar for the, for the two nights of the fair. Um, I, I still would like to see this thing tabled. Um, you know, it can be brought back up at next meeting, um, whether it's a thousand dollars or eight thousand dollars. It still hasn't been approved by the partnership. Um, there's too many open-ended things here that, that I don't believe that the, um, partnership or the Fair, Fair Association has done anything to try and find other facilities. They're just saying, hey, we want the city's property, and that's it. And, uh, um, other cities that run these events, they're, the city's not running them. They're being run on private property. Um, in some cases, some cases I believe the cities are, but most cases I believe they're held on private property.
I think it's because of where our city property sits, though, because it is close to the parking lot, and it is city property that we're looking at, not park property. Um, but I, I think that's why it's a good fit for Green Valley to do it the way that they're trying to do it.
Very little distinction between city property and park property. It's, uh, other than we have a park board that controls the park properties, but they're governed by the city as well. Um, uh, we're going to, last year they said there were, what was, was, I'm correct, last year there were four events held to park on Friday nights in? Or Shannon, either one of yous?
Um, I mean, it was the, whatever the very end was.
That was just, that was just for last year, that those four events were scheduled on Friday nights?
Yeah, it was the very, it was after it was stopped being held at the, uh, the parking lot.
No, I'm talking about events that are scheduled for the pavilions and stuff, not the pavilions, but the rims of the.
Oh, yeah, when we, I had Shannon put it together, and for two thousand twenty, we didn't count that because everything was, uh, so off that in two thousand nineteen, if you took away the fair and the car show, I think there was, there were five events or something like that, five or six on Friday nights.
Yeah, that's correct. I, our pavilion is predominantly rented on Saturdays and Sundays, uh, for the most part. Um, and again, we didn't look at twenty twenty rentals because so much of it was impacted with COVID and closures and restrictions. So we looked at twenty nineteen numbers. Um, and Friday nights aren't a, a big rental night for the, uh, pavilion or even the park shelters for that matter. It's, it's generally Saturdays and Sundays. But in discussing this with Ken, I wanted to stress the importance of making sure the area is cleaned up after the event, because we will have Saturday morning rentals in the pavilion and that shelter for, um, and, and so forth, uh, that we've, we have park maintenance guys come in over the weekend. So I just want to make sure that our guys aren't focused on cleanup, pavilion restroom cleanup and so forth. And they can do the other duties that they need to do over the weekend.
Are, are the ball fields used on Friday evenings?
They are. Yeah, we, we do, and, and actually starting here in, in a week, you'll start seeing practices on both of those ball fields, uh, the east and the west. Um, and, and I think that's initially why, in talking with Ken, we, we looked at moving, um, this event to the parking lot in between the pavilion and the community center, so that it didn't take up the parking for those coaches, parents coming with their kids to, to practice on, on those two baseball fields on Friday nights.
Mayor, one thing I did want to, I did want to throw out when we talked about this compared to other events and setting a precedent, in, in some ways this was, it was foreseen when we passed the food truck ordinance last year, since it actually was a part of the code that specifically says permissible locations, one of which being, um, city property designated for this purpose. So the groundwork is laid in the code. Obviously, the board is the one that decides what city property should be designated. Uh, but this isn't a one-off, um, you know, necessarily, in my opinion, like opening the door for just everything under the moon. It's something that's actually in the code.
Well, so when someone comes in and wants to do a flea market every Saturday. what do we have to 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 differ that from uh, from this event?
Well, I think that the first part would be that there's nothing in the code that says anything about um needing to open it up to flea markets or anything like that.
We, so we have something in the codes?
Yeah, so it literally in the uh, in the ordinance that the board passed last year, um, it's section six sixty point oh four oh, it says permissible locations for food trucks. Uh, A, a food truck may conduct business at the following locations. One, private property when properly zoned for retail sales with a written permission of property owner. Two, parking lot in a residential district with written permission of property owner and owners of property immediately abutting parked mobile food unit. Three, city property designated for this purpose.
I I still feel we're opening ourselves up for suit for someone that wants to come in, use city property for other commercial ventures. Um, you have any thoughts on that, Sarah?
Uh, Mayor, I agree with Ken. So when we passed this ordinance, we didn't really wanna be specific on where we would allow these types of food truck units, so we wanted to leave it up to the board to decide what was appropriate and where it was appropriate. If, obviously, if we had a food truck unit come in and wanted to put it on a parking lot, that's not gonna work, and you guys would not approve that sort of permissible location, but you could approve a different location. As far as opening it up for um other ventures like the 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 Purple Peace item you guys just passed tonight, you know, you have to kind of look at the public purpose. This is good for the public, that sort of thing, because what we've decided tonight was we're not going to enforce ordinances on that group during that event. Um, now, if you had a similar group come in that says, well, I don't want ordinance to be enforced on me either, then we gotta take a look at that and see uh how closely they're related, if there's any issues with that other group. Does that make sense? But since your code does allow these permissible locations as approved by the board, I think you're okay in this instance.
Any other discussion?
I think we just keep in mind, too, you know, that it's how the the residents, overwhelmingly, the majority of the residents, you know, wanna see this, so keep that in mind.
What 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 percentage of the population do you say overwhelmingly? We have fourteen thousand people in this town. There's two or three hundred people go to this event.
Well, I think over, I think you can tell by the the amount of people that have come there, wanting, that want it. You know?
Three, two to three hundred is not a a vast majority of the population.
Okay, well, do you wanna put out a poll then, Mayor?
I'd like to see, like I say, they have a, they have an alternative for private property. I would like to see a motion. I'd like to find out about the insurances. Um, I don't think until they provide us the insurances, we can uh allow them on the property and and uh um, there isn't even a um board meeting set up for the partnership until, what's the next meeting, April ninth?
That is correct.
Away from uh, from that, and it's not
Mayor, Mayor, I put this on the agenda on the last board meeting for the partnership because you asked me to. Um, as far as food trucks are concerned, um, we had already discussed the food trucks. We know going, that we were gonna go forward. Um, so the partnership actually doesn't have anything to vote on at this point in time. The only thing, I will agree with you that that insurance amount, I heard one thousand twenty-six. You heard eight thousand twenty-six. Once I get that that number confirmed, um, we will, you know, that that would be a point that I would have to take for the partnership. But as far as the 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 board itself not wanting to do the 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 food trucks, that that's not even, that's not even, that's a mute point at this point. The partnership board is is ready to go forward with it. Um,
It's, if it's an eight thousand dollar figure, I think that has to be brought before the board before it's just okayed by you.
I will definitely get that quote from Brad, and I will, I will definitely handle that. If it's eight thousand, I will definitely take that before the board. Um, and as far as us not having insurance, if if we would go to Dennis Shroud's location or any other location, I wouldn't operate that way, sir. That 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 is leaving anybody and everybody that's a part of the partnership board wide open. Um, I would definitely carry liability insurance regardless of where we're at. Um, one, it's just, you know, respect for that that property owner at that point. Um, so as as far as the board is concerned, yes, we will discuss the cost of the insurance, um, especially if it's eight thousand, but I I I don't, there's not gonna be any other vote. If if I heard, if I heard properly and it's one thousand, we're gonna, we'll just move forward.
But you have the authorization to do that?
If I, yes, if it's only one thousand, because I'm gonna get, I will raise that money, yes, but the the partnership's really well aware that I do sponsorships to uh cover the expenses of this event.
All right, um, in that case, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Heard three ayes there.
Aye, Herr Stratton.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. I never did hear six ayes.
Aye, Hedley.
Aye, Cotton.
Aye.
Aye, Cleaver.
Yes. You're on mute. Alderman Bass? You're on mute.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
He said it.
Okay. Glad you heard it, Alderman Stratton. Um, motion, are all opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Mayor, and and Board of Aldermen. Appreciate you guys.
Thanks for being on.
Next item, resolution R twenty-one dash twenty-eight. Um, resolution, um, appointing um Jim Offsted.
We skipped over twenty-seven there, the bottom of the page.
I'm sorry, I missed it. Put six zero down the wrong one. Um, resolution R twenty, twenty-one days twenty-seven. A resolution appoint, adopting the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two through twen- twenty twenty-six Green Valley Capital Improvement Plan.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number R twenty-one dash twenty-seven.
Mine's gone.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Okay, a second, Alderman Cleaver. Any discussion?
Mayor and members of the board, I'm again gonna turn it over to our city engineer, Dick Tuttle, to go over the plan.
Before you tonight is the proposed twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six capital improvement plan. I have a small uh PowerPoint presentation that I like to go through with you, kind of, it's a summary of the projects. You should have a copy of the uh, the entire plan, and this is just a uh, a summary of the projects, so I'm gonna share a screen here. Hopefully, this works like it's supposed to. Can y'all see that?
Yep.
Okay. So so the 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 purpose of the plan is to provide a flexible planning tool for future capital projects and major person purchases. Uh, identify some needed projects, uh, identify possible funding sources for those projects, and then match the uh, project timing to the funding availability. The projects consist of parks projects, public works projects, major purchases for the police department, and vehicle and equipment.
This stuff under resolution twenty-one dash twenty-eight. All of this stuff.
There, Alderman Hedley.
Projects consist of tra-, excuse me, trail and street projects, water and sewer main projects, and park upgrades. What you're seeing now is the uh five-year projected uh funding schedule. At the bottom, it shows the total funding for each year, and you'll notice that the largest portion of that is actually out there beyond the, beyond the limits of this particular um five-year plan. The big project that's shown under twenty twenty-six would be the new water tower. So the, again, these are all the proposed projects that are in there, many of which are unfunded at this point, or the funding sources have not been identified. So some of the projects that are in the five years include the Ryan Meadows uh trail connection uh to the crop, to Cross Creek and to the school. It's a ninety thousand dollar project scheduled for next year, and it connects the subdivision to the school at the Cross Creek Drive. This is a trail along Buckner Tarzney Road that would connect uh Blue Branch Trail to Snibar Boulevard. It's a three hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred forty-dollar project scheduled for twenty twenty-three. Uh, replace playground equipment in Armstrong Park. It's four hundred thousand dollar project in twenty twenty-two with a hundred and forty thousand dollars in grant funding. Uh, resurface the loop trail in Armstrong Park. Uh, this would be a ten thousand dollar project and is also scheduled for next year, and it would be part of piggybacking the city's paving contract. Uh, Front Street Downtown, uh, the project, the design is complete.
They always present.
It's a one and a half million dollar project that would be starting in twenty twenty-three. Since the plans were completed some time ago, uh, the design would have to be updated. And some uh easements, and right away, might still be required. And so that would be scheduled for twenty twenty-three with actual construction scheduled for the year afterwards. This is the connection from James Rallo Road to Sandcar. This was also part of the downtown uh street project. The plans got to fifty percent complete before they were stopped. Yeah, so it's a eight hundred thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-dollar project and scheduled for twenty twenty-four. Again, the design would have to be completed, and there is one tract of land that would have to be acquired for this project. Sewer main project, uh, James Rallo from Main Street to James Rallo Court. It's an upgrade of an existing sewer line. It was planned, and the design is complete, and it was planned to take care of uh anticipated growth west of this site. Uh, that growth is now starting to be realized, so the project is being resurrected. Like I said, the design is complete. It's a seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar project that is scheduled for twenty twenty-six. Water main, uh, tying Eagles Parkway to uh the Green Valley Community Campus Site. Where, that's where the water line ends, and it's a dead-end line. It's a long dead-end line, so this would provide a loop connection between the two lines. And uh, uh, it's a much-needed third loop between the north and south parts of town. Uh, the water tower, this water tower was identified in the last water system study. Uh, right now, it's proposed as a one point two-five million gallon tank in the year twenty twenty-five. Design and then construction in twenty twenty-six. According to the report, the city will uh max out on its storage needs in twenty twenty-five. Pavement maintenance programs, twenty twenty-two, five hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, big project here is Duncan Road from Buckner Tarzney to Tire Road. And then other projects, other smaller projects, some that were scheduled previously to this pro-, to this plan being put together. Uh, twenty twenty-three, it's a, it's a smaller program as far as a number of streets, but it's more expensive due to the one large street in the project, and that's Ryan Road. Uh, takes care of a part of Snibar, Tisha Lane, and uh Gateway Court. And we wanted to hold off on doing Tisha and Gateway Court until after the valley subdivision moved along, because we didn't wanna do the overlay and then have all the concrete trucks from the new construction going in and out of there and destroying the new pavement. Uh, twenty twenty-four program, five hundred five thousand, seven, seven hundred dollars. It takes care of uh Snibar Parkway and Snibar Boulevard going up to uh US forty. Takes care of the Blue Branch area and some other projects scattered around. All identified there. The twenty twenty-five program, five hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. And this is, the, these projects are scattered uh all over the city. And there is no one particular project that's large in that. It just picks up, based on the IMS study, it picks up the roads that would be uh in worse condition by that time. Twenty twenty-six program, I always have a hard time seeing these pink lines, but the uh, one of the projects here is uh Dillingham Road north of Pink Hill. That would be a a chip seal project, and uh then you have Nelson, which uh the IMS program identified that by this time Nelson would need an overlay again. And the last project for the public works side is Eagles Parkway uh from Buckner Tarzney out to Cross Creek Drive. This project, uh, we originally applied for a grant that to fund it in twenty twenty-three. Uh, that that didn't uh pass muster, so we're gonna go after that grant again for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Uh, it it includes reconstructing portions of the road, putting in turn lanes for the school, uh, putting underground drainage, curb and gutter, new sidewalks, and converting uh some of the sidewalks to trails. This is the vehicle replacement uh program for the Community Development Department, replacing one pickup truck in twenty twenty-three and replacing the pool vehicle in twenty twenty-five. Those vehicles are both two thousand twelve vehicles. Uh, vehicle replacement po-, program for the police department includes replacing two vehicles in each of the uh next five years or four years, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Vehicle and equipment replacement for Parks and Recreation includes replacing a flatbed trailer and a mower. And then twenty twenty-two, replacing a mower in twenty twenty-three, and replacing a pickup truck uh in twenty twenty-four. The uh replacement program for Public Works uh involves a new salt spreader in twenty twenty-two, replacing a trailer and a pickup in twenty twenty-three. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, a trailer, the sewer inspection equipment and a dump truck. Replace in uh, in twenty twenty-five, uh, a pickup truck and a dump truck, and a pickup truck and a dump truck again in twenty twenty-six. The uh PD one is replacement of the police duty uh firearms. This is replace them over a five-year period, which would be thirty-four hundred dollars per year, and it replaces the current forty caliber Gen four firearms with nine-millimeter Gen five firearms. Uh, PD two is a police radio replacement. This is forty-six thousand dollars per year, again, starting in twenty twenty-two. The existing radios were all purchased in in uh twenty thirteen, and there's a higher level of encryption that is required to be able to communicate with all other users. Uh, I didn't go into all the ones that are beyond the current five-year program, but I can answer questions about those as well if you have any. And with that, I will take any questions.
Mayor and Board, one thing I did wanna add there was, what we tried to do is we listened to you over the last few years as we've gone through budget time, uh, and as different purchases have come up, and you know, I know Alderman Hedley, for one, was one that, you know, threw out there as a way to kind of get more things together so we can plan them out instead of just doing the infrastructure side of things. So Dick did a really good job of kind of bringing all the different departments together and all the separate plans that we have, and trying to show that in the, you know, the five-year CIP, so you know, everything's in one document, and it is a lot easier, more transparent for you guys to see what we're looking at into the future.
I had a question on uh potential federal funding that might be coming our way. If we receive that, um, Ken, is that, um, is it hopeful to speed up some of these projects?
Yeah, so that was actually gonna be one of my staff comments was um the money that we are going to be seeing, if you guys have seen in the news, um, the American Rescue Act, which was the the latest uh COVID which was the latest COVID recovery bill. Right now, the City of Green Valley slated to get 2.67 million. And we're still working through, you know, exactly what we can and can't use it on internally. But infrastructure does look like one of the things that that can be used on going forward. And this program is a little different than the last one. This looks like the money will be dispersed in two different cycles, but you have until the end of 2024 to spend those funds. So those are discussions we're going to be having with the board moving forward here as we kind of work through that process and see what our options are and get your feedback on that. But, but yes, Mayor, to answer your question, infrastructure is something that is a part of it, it appears.
Additional questions?
Mayor, I have one related to the water, water tower and related infrastructure. Ken, can you remind us how, how we would, I mean, like the water tower replacements, $4.6 million? Are we building into the cost of replacing that? Or is all the cost built into the current water sewer billing that we are using via the reserve funds? Or are we going to have to look at other, other things like raising water rates? Which I hope that's not the case.
Yeah, and I don't have an exact answer for you, but one of the things, you know, we have been doing over the years is setting money aside on a yearly basis, knowing we have some of those water expenses coming up. And so that's all some of the stuff that we have to look at going forward. But, I mean, as far as like what the rates are actually set at, going through a rate study is something that we do to incorporate everything that we have going on. You know, but at this time, I think it's going to be multiple funding sources that cover the cost of that. So I don't have an exact answer for you on that, but it's not just like a guarantee it's going to be that kind of thing. There are a few different funding mechanisms that can use for a water infrastructure project like that.
And will they leave the existing water tower there and make a new one or tear that one down?
I will let Mr. Tuttle go over what this, what's included with this one.
It depends. They could leave it there. However, the pressure on the north side of town is 17 PSI lower than the south side of town. So with the replacement of some other mains, you could build a taller tower and take that one down, or you could build it at the same height as that tower and utilize both. The advantage to having two towers at the same location is when you, when you have somebody come in to clean or paint the tank, then you still have one tank in service while the other tank is being cleaned or painted.
Thank you.
Probably a fairly substantial cost savings, too, isn't it?
Yes, it would put off the need for an additional tower for quite some time.
Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, sorry.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Seeing none, motion carries six zero. Now it's going to hit resolution I tried to put through before. Resolution R 21-28. Resolution appointing James Hoff Stettler to the Green Valley Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term. Alderman Todd.
A resolution by the Board of
Just read the resolution.
I move that we accept the 21-28. To have the appointing James Hoff Stetter by the Green Valley Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term.
Have motion, do I have a second? Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, but I do have questions.
Have a second, any discussion?
Mayor, this, this position was initially planned for replacing a couple of terms, one of the two terms that are expiring. Did you have a chat with the gentleman that you would be replacing with this person? Or are we just doing this blindly and not giving them the opportunity to say they wanted the position?
It's not replacing anyone on the current board. We just had a resignation from, I'm sorry, Mr. Lovely. And, and we're currently replacing him. Right now, we're not replacing any existing board members.
But he resigned Friday night, not.
Well, I understand, but this, this appointment now is replacing him.
I think what he's asking is before this, this was on the agenda before that resignation came about.
That's irrelevant. That's what this appointment is doing.
Well, I don't think it's irrelevant. I mean, if you haven't had the conversation, whether you like or dislike the gentlemen that are doing it, I think it's, these folks are volunteering their time. And we should have that conversation.
I don't disagree with that, but right now this resolution is appointing a person to an empty seat.
Understood.
Any further discussion?
So just, just to make sure it's clear, it is to fill the seat that Paul Loving resigned from on Friday.
That's what I stated, yes.
Okay.
Additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Seeing none, motion carries six zero. Next, move on to ordinances.
So are you ready for the first read then? Okay, an ordinance amending traffic codes scheduled to stop intersections of the City of Green Valley municipal code.
Mayor, I move that we accept the second reading of Bill 2105. Ordnance number 2541.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Knox?
Yes.
Alderman Stratton?
Yes.
Alderman Totten?
Yes. What's this?
Six zero. Next item, and I'm sorry, that was my fault in not stringing it out correctly, Ms. Logan. Next item, Bill number B 21-05.
Oh, six, I think now. And this one is an ordinance vacating 50-foot right-of-way for Capel Street between 215 Front Street and 303 Front Street.
I move that we make the first reading by title only of Bill number B 21-06.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second, Alderman Knox, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Or this, I'm sorry, this is the first read.
Yeah, I would say, actually, Mayor, I just didn't hit, I was on mute there. Just going to turn it over to Mr. Trozen to give an overview of the item there.
Mr. Mayor and Board, let me share my screen so I Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes. So the applicants are Jerry Simmons, who he owns the property here at 215 Front. Miranda Saunders owns the property at 303 Front. They are requesting that the 50-foot of right-of-way, which is this green space in between their two properties, be vacated. If the planted right-of-way is vacated and approved by the Board of Aldermen, then each of the property owners would be given 25 feet. So 25 feet would go to Mr. Simmons, 25 feet would go to Ms. Saunders. The, the following utility companies were notified. They responded that they had no objections to the proposed vacation. Spire for the gas, Evergy for electric, Comcast for cable TV, City of Green Valley for water sewer. The reason why we notify them, just to assure that they have no utilities within that utility right-of-way or right-of-way for the roadway. This right-of-way was actually recorded as a part of the Fennels Edition that was recorded in 1885. No private rights will be unreasonably injured or endangered. The public will suffer no unreasonable loss or inconvenience. The proposed right-of-way vacation does not adversely affect properties in the general facilities. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on March 10th on 2021. The commission voted to recommend approval of the right-of-way vacation to the Board of Aldermen. Staff recommends approval of the right-of-way vacation as well. I believe that one of the property owners, Mr. Simmons, is on the call as well, if you have any questions.
Any further discussion? Any question? Did you have something, Alderman Todd?
No, I'm just sitting here wondering how much it's affected me. I got 317 and 309.
See no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Next item, Bill number B 21-07.
An ordinance submitting chapter 600 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Green Valley, Missouri pertaining to issuance of liquor licenses near schools and churches.
Alderman Todd.
Okay, I agree we move to make the first reading by title only for Bill number B 2107.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley, any discussion?
Mayor and members of the board, as it happens, there are changes that require us to make changes to our code. And one of those was found in the liquor license section, and it had to do with locations near schools and churches. In the past, it was written as, they couldn't be located within a certain distance, liquor establishment couldn't be located within a certain distance of a church or school. And if it was, then it required basically a granting of permission by the church or the school. There actually was law that changed that. So now it is that there, it will say that there can't be a liquor establishment within 100 feet of a church or school, but that the board is actually the one who can waive that after notice is sent to nearby property owners. So the group who is responsible for waiving that requirement is the Board of Aldermen and not any church or school. So this is updating our code to align with state law.
Are there questions, discussion?
Just, just to make sure I understand this, we're changing it so it's the 100 and not the 600, correct?
No, the, the distance itself didn't change. We had already made that adjustment when we did the last liquor license update. So the 100 feet is still in place. This is just the mechanism for waiving the, the requirement that it can't be located within that 100 feet.
And Ken, are the current establishments already grandfathered in?
Yes.
To a point, I mean, the current restrictions have been on some of the current facilities would be lifted.
Well, I mean, yeah, it couldn't. It's not a thing that would penalize any, any license holder, could say that.
Discussion?
Yeah, when, when they lay, when they put the feet, 100 feet, 600 feet to a church, does that include their parking lot with some of these churches that are getting parking lots that are 400, 500 feet deep?
No, so it actually is from outer wall to outer wall.
Question?
Places are going to be affected by our rule.
What's that?
Do we have establishments that are going to be affected by this rule?
If we look at people who have applied in the past and been denied, there is one that this would affect that I could think of.
Who is it?
Would be the acquaint gathering would meet the definition of 100 feet.
Okay.
Allowed, correct?
Well, it's not allowed. It would be a different process now. It still technically wouldn't be allowed, but the way this code is now, basically, you would write the Board of Aldermen to get permission. And the Board of Aldermen, we would send notice out to property owners within, I believe it's 200 feet, letting them know the board making that change. And then it would be something that was allowed, assuming the board did that. It's obviously still your choice.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Seeing none, motion carries six zero. Move on to city attorneys' report.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have for you tonight is that it's about that time again. The Lawburn Municipal Law is doing their certified officials training. We will be holding our training and independence at NPR Building on April 30th, 2021. And that starts about eight o'clock or 8:30, I guess, is registration for $20. Get your breakfast and lunch and snacks. And I believe if you are a member of NPR, they do cover your, their cost of coming. So it's a good time to eat and have fun and do a little bit of learning. So if you guys are interested, please shoot us an email. We'll get you signed up. And that's all I have tonight.
Next item, city administration staff reports.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I just wanted to let you know that the accountants from Trout Beeman will be at City Hall next week to begin work on the audit for the city's 2020 fiscal year. The only other item I had was I did provide a monthly financial report for February in the board packet. And that's all that I had for the meeting this evening. Thank you.
I had a few comments. Earlier mentioned the American Rescue Act. I was going to have that in my comments, but that's something we'll be meeting about internally. And then also discussions with, with you to see how we best want to use those funds and what, what's available for it to be spent on. If anybody drives down Buckner Tarzney and looks at our stone monument sign there. If anybody drives down Buckner Tarzney and looks at our stone monument sign there over the weekend, we had a company come in and do some touch up work there. Over the years, it had faded so much, you couldn't even see what was actually on the sign. It just looked like a nice piece of stone. So we have the black letters put back in, so it actually identifies as a city hall now when you drive down Buckner Tarzney. The audio visual equipment, the parts that we were waiting on appear to be in, and they scheduled installation for twenty fifth. So everything should be in functioning and ready to have meetings going forward. So our plan at this point would be to be back in person for our April meetings. I do want you guys to look at your calendars for a workshop. We are looking at either the thirtieth or thirty first. And that would be follow up discussion for facility needs. We usually do those at six o'clock, so if you can check your calendars and get an email over as quickly as possible or a call to myself or Jamie and let us know your availability on those two dates, we can get that set up. And then the last item, it's my understanding that we had a couple of birthdays amongst the, or had and will have a couple of birthdays with the Alderman crowd here. So I believe Ms. Totten celebrated a birthday on Saturday. And Mr. Bass, who looks completely uninterested right now, will be celebrating a birthday tomorrow, so.
I didn't want you.
What's that?
I didn't want you to call me out.
So happy birthday on Saturday, and maybe I'm the first one that's told you happy birthday for tomorrow. But that is all I had, Mayor.
Next item, Board of Alderman reports and comments, Alderman Bass.
Thanks, Ken, but I I did want to clarify just a couple, I was writing down some of the dates that you had mentioned. You said the thirtieth, I assume that's March.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, oh, and what was the other date?
The thirty first.
Thirty first, okay. Okay.
Work, we'll just, we'll have to look a little further in the future, but.
Okay. And and I have nothing else, ladies and thank you, and I look forward to seeing everybody in person next month.
Alderman Cleaver?
Nothing at this time, other than I concur with Alderman Bass. Be nice to get back in person, thank you.
Alderman Headley?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Knox?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you laid on when we'll be seeing the new patrol cars.
I don't, Mark, do we have a date on when those will be delivered or to?
Actually, we don't have a date on the new ones. We're actually still getting the last one from this, from last year out, getting that ready. So we don't have a date on the new ones.
Okay, just wondering how far to like. Thank you.
Welcome.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Alderman Stratton?
Nope, just excited to get back in person, I'm happy to hear that.
Well, I'd like to say thank you very much. I had a wonderful birthday. I couldn't believe the people that bought us pizza and cakes and cupcakes. And we still got some left over, but we had a wonderful time. I thank everybody.
Thank you. Happy birthday, and happy birthday to you, Alderman Bass. Next item, mayor's report, I have nothing to add at this time. Jamie, I will stop in tomorrow at noon, sign what you need signed. Nothing else? Nothing else, meaning adjourned, oh, I'm sorry, is there, I don't believe there's a need for executive session?
Yeah, there is for item one, legal, three personnel, twelve.
Negotiations.
Negotiated, and then thirteen personnel records.
Need a motion to adjourn the executive session?
Some move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Stratton, roll call, please.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Knox?
Yes.
Alderman Stratton?
Yes.
Alderman Totten?
Yes.
Okay, give me just a second, we'll get everybody set up here.